All right, thank you all for coming. We're getting the meeting called to order at 5:01 PM. We're going to start out with Item B, which is a moment of silence. Commissioner Tabia?
Please stand and join me in the place. I am President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, I am an patriot, an American, and a citizen of the liberty and justice of our world.
All right, we don't have any minutes for approval today, so we're going to move right on into resolutions, awards, and presentations. First one up, E1, Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Jim Barfield, and anyone else you have?
Commissioner Barfield did submit a comment card as well, so we'll certainly give him an opportunity.
Do you want to go ahead and do the resolution?
Would you like to do it first, or how would you like to?
No, I'll do it. Thank you for, all of you, for being here. Whereas, community involvement was the genesis of Brevard Zoo and continues to be its heart more than 25 years later. Whereas, more than 16,000 Brevard residents from various industries, including aerospace and the military, designed and built the Brevard Zoo. Whereas, Brevard Zoo opened its doors in 1994 and today serves more than 450,000 visitors each year with a vital and necessary mission of wildlife conservation through education and participation. Whereas, Brevard Zoo has consistently been rated in top-10 lists of zoos across the nation and is recognized as a hub for sciences, education, and conservation in our region. Whereas, Brevard Zoo is in the process of planning and funding the development of a world-class aquarium in Port Canaveral that will serve as center, as a center, for the Indian River Lagoon restoration. Whereas, nearly 80% of Brevard County residents support an aquarium near Port Canaveral as part of a conservation campus that supports marine restoration, education, and recreation. Now therefore, be it resolved that the County Commission of Brevard County, Florida, that Section 1, Brevard County endorses the goals of environmental preservation and economic vitality, Section 2 encourages that all residents of the county support the aquarium project and take the time to visit and become educated on the importance of environmental restoration and preservation. Section 3 directs county staff to actively support and cooperate with Brevard Zoo and its efforts to move the aquarium project forward. Section 4, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon adoption by the County Commission. Section 5, this resolution was adopted at a regular meeting of the Brevard County Commission on the 10th day of December 2019. Mr. Chair, I recommend that we approve this resolution.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second it as it was read into the record. Any discussion? Please, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm a little concerned with this, specifically Section 3. It directs staff, so I do have a question, a couple of questions for the author, Mr. Chair.
Please feel free.
Thank you. When this resolution directs staff to, quote, "actively support and cooperate with the zoo," what are you envisioning with this?
Well, for me, it just envisions that they're not going to be opposed to it. They'll do their normal, neutral position, that they're not going to oppose it, they're not going to go out and campaign for it. Staff has got their jobs to do.
I agree with you, but it clearly says-
If you would like me to strike it, I would be happy to do that. I don't have a problem with that.
Gentlemen, may I propose perhaps a compromise, rewording it to say, "Request county staff to cooperate with Brevard Zoo in its efforts to move the aquarium project forward"?
Sounds fine with me.
Is that more to your liking, perhaps?
It's closer, it's closer, but either way, it's not going to end up, obviously, with my support for multiple reasons. One more question, Mr. Chair, with your indulgence. The resolution states that, quote, "Nearly 80% of Brevard County residents support an aquarium near Port Canaveral as part of conservation campuses, supports marine restoration, education, and recreation." Where did you get 80%?
My staff came up with that number. I'm assuming that they did some kind of study.
Your staff did a study?
Well, they probably got the information from the zoo itself.
Mr. Winston, do you know about the 80% number?
The 2018 survey that we surveyed Brevard County residents on both the zoo's popularity and the aquariums, and the aquarium came out at 79%.
How big was that sample? And did you inform them the cost, the taxpayer cost that potentially would be going into it?
Actually, we did have the taxpayer cost, which was known at that time, which was tourist development funds. The sample was, sample size was obviously looked at, it was over 500 people, and that's based on the typical logistics of when you do that.
And did you have the zoo attendees, or did you do that-
Nope, this was a cold call, phone sample in Brevard County.
Cold call, phone?
Yeah, it was a phone, it was a phone interceptor.
So you were aware, obviously, of the many issues that-
We were, we did with a professional polling company that's used very often throughout Florida, it's used for all sorts of things.
Okay.
And they actually indicated that both the zoo and this project was about the highest result they've ever seen. The zoo was over, almost 90%, and they've said they've never seen numbers like that on anything they've done in Florida before.
And to be clear, you did, did the $10 million of TDT money was mentioned?
Yeah, yeah.
The $10 million number?
They looked at what, so I don't remember the exact wording of what it was.
Okay.
But they did a whole bunch of different things, you know, they typically ask a bunch of questions to dig down and see where people's comfort level was. I can't remember the exact wording of it.
Great. At some point, if you wouldn't mind, I'm out of curiosity, I'd certainly like to see the outcome of that.
Sure, and we plan to do it again.
Hopefully, hopefully with the actual numbers of tax dollars that go into it.
Yeah.
Commissioner Pritchett?
This isn't, I know you guys have a lot of fundraising to do, this is really just keeping it in front of the public and encouraging them to stay supportive of the idea of an aquarium. So this resolution's just, just a nice thing of knowing that we all would like an aquarium. You guys have a lot of hurdles still to jump through, but I think it's wonderful, and I hope we're able to find those other funds to be able to put an aquarium in place.
And just to try to, perhaps, in the sense of full disclosure, Mr. Winston and I, we did have a discussion about some concerns I had earlier with respect to this resolution. I know that the way it was originally worded, Section 1, under the "wherefore" portion, indicated it was unwavering support, and while I am supportive of the aquarium, I'm supportive of it because it's the best option that's been presented to us out of the options that have been made available, namely, no other options with the money that's, that's under discussion here. So, you know, certainly I'll continue supporting it until something better comes along, unless the money is committed and spent prior to that time. But in terms of unwavering support, I do appreciate there was some flexibility it appears, and that, that was changed prior to it coming up today. But I think it's, it's a great project, and I hope that it moves forward. I hope you all are successful in the fundraising, and I see a couple more lights that have come up. Commissioner Pritchett?
I just want to say how nice it is, Commissioner Barfield, to have you back in the house. It's wonderful seeing your face here again, but I must say, you have left us in good hands. And Commissioner Loebert has done a good job representing your district and-
It really is strange being here. I'm just telling you, sitting down here.
Especially on that side, right?
We've got a couple controversial items. If you want to swap with me for those items, I'd be happy to do that this evening.
I have a canal scheduled or something.
Commissioner Smith?
I did that to him.
Oh, you did it to him, okay. Well, we have a motion, do we have a second on it?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Pritchett. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, Commissioner Tabia opposed, congratulations, though, 4-1.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, and county commissioners, and Mr. Abate, really on behalf of the zoo, the aquarium, and all supporters, I just want to thank you all for passing this resolution. It's, you know, if you just kind of sit back and imagine what it'll be like when you have this aquarium, where kids and families can immerse themselves into the aquarium, how it operates, it can be educational, all of that is going to make a big difference in the community. But most importantly, it's going to put into each other's hands where they can see exactly how important environmental restoration is and what we're going to be doing with the lagoon. It's very important that we get this resolution and show that we have support within our community, a number of cities are too, and I just want to thank you all. And also just let you all know, you can follow us on social media, and our website is theaquariumproject.org. That's pretty original, and that's what it is. So again, I just want to thank you all, and thank you all, and wish you all and your families a Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah, and just hope for the best, and I'm really, really happy with what you are doing. And I just want to tell you, you guys are all doing a very good job, and kind of without me, okay? Without me. So you're all doing a good job, and thank you all, and wish you the best of everything.
Likewise, thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
I do have something I'd like to say. I don't know how many people here or on our commission up here have seen the artist's renderings of what the aquarium's going to look like, but it blew me away, because like our zoo, I've been to other zoos, and I've been to aquariums, and quite frankly, was never much impressed with any of them. And Keith Winston kept pestering me to come look at our zoo here, and even though I, my wife and I were supporters and fundraisers at the beginning, I never visited that zoo. And he finally got me there, and I'm probably its biggest supporter now, and I'm, I can tell you from the renderings that I've seen, the artist's renderings, of what this aquarium's going to be like, it's going to blow people away. And I've never seen anything like it. It's phenomenal.
And Keith, I want to put-
It's exciting.
I apologize.
No, go ahead, it's just exciting.
Yeah, Keith, I want to put you on the spot for a moment to see if you've had any progress on the shark naming. We've had many discussions on shark naming.
So, you know, we hear many ideas from the public, but I have to admit that Commissioners Loebert, I thought, was the most creative, and we want to do it, and that is, we want to offer sharks naming only to attorneys. And we're not sure whether you get to pay money to name a shark or to unnamed it if we name it after you. So I thought that was brilliant as a fundraising ploy. We're definitely keeping that on the list, so.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you. Just the one, yeah. All right, moving right along, we're going to move on into consent. I would entertain a motion, I would like to pull F-21. Well, I should say, I wouldn't like to, but I feel obligated to pull F-21. Is there anything else that folks would like polled? All right, may I have a motion to pass consent less F-21?
I'll make a motion to pass consent less Item F-21, pulled by Commissioner Loebert.
Thank you.
A second?
And a second from Commissioner Pritchett. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, let's move to F-21. So going to page 258, and I'll let folks take a moment to get there, this is on the appointments. This is on the Tourism Development Council, and I saw Peter was back there. I'm not going to call him up unless someone would like him. I'm sure he doesn't want to be put on the spot for this, but he's available should someone wish to put him on the spot. Essentially, the state statute, and I'd invite either, I'd invite either Peter or Eden, Ms. Bentley, to jump in if I'm saying anything that does not mesh with their understanding. The state statute with respect to this mandates that we have either three or four hotel owners or operators, so essentially, three or four individuals who collect the TDT, so that the tourist development tax. Right now, the folks that we have on there that are classified as owners or operators, we've got Deborah Green with the International Palms in Driftwood, we have Bob Boger, we have Giles, who's also classified that way, and then PK is, I believe, a GM or has an equivalent position down in Palm Bay, and this one would be potentially a fifth, depending on how the board looks at it. From my reading, if we say that Giles is not a hotelier, we would be flip-flopping on what the board and/or staff have done in the past. I personally don't know that he is one, I don't know that I would have considered him to be one. It doesn't matter in terms of his ability to remain on the TDC, but in addition to serving as a commissioner, as someone that is an attorney and takes following state statute with or without teeth, with the utmost seriousness, I just thought this was something that I needed to bring up to the commission. If the commission wants to go ahead and approve it, I'm not going to make a big fuss about it, but this was something I thought I did need to bring up, because this is something that would potentially put us at five, whereas we're required to have no less than three and no more than four. But again, I don't know that there are any teeth in the statute, so I don't know that there would be a particular penalty for us failing to, to follow that, but I'll leave it there. Commissioner Pritchett?
What I tried to do, well, one, I like Mr. Hermanson, I think he's incredibly good at tourist development, but what I did is, Laura Lee was a restaurant owner.
Yes, ma'am.
And so I asked Mr. Hermanson, he owns two restaurants. So actually, I was just doing another restaurant owner in for Laura Lee, although he's, he's got a lot of businesses. He, he's very active in a lot of, he just does a lot of stuff, you know, I think he was part of the cruise line at one time.
That's interesting.
So, yeah, I like him in there, and unless Ms. Bentley's got another idea, but I did talk to her about it one time, and she thought it was okay.
Yeah, again, I, when I vote against this, I'm not voting against this in any reflection of your choice or in any reflection of his qualifications, but my, my interpretation of the statute's different, so, you know, again, I'm, I'm not trying to make a statement or have people read between lines that aren't there, so if there's a motion, it sounds like it'll be 4-1.
Okay. I'd like to get, make a motion then to go ahead and appoint Mr. Hermanson.
Second.
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then any opposed? Nay. So it passes, I'm sorry, it passes 3-2, with myself and Commissioner Tabia in the negative. So moving along here. We've got some public comment. Let's start up with Charles Tovey from Melbourne.
Welcome. Thank you. Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. It's becoming a habit coming up here. Just wondering if we could have a compromise, instead of five minutes, instead of three minutes, let's make it four minutes. Four minutes is adequate for the three-minute people, and five minutes seems to be too long, so I was wondering maybe considering four minutes for speaking, public speaking either way. They destroyed my mailbox again. Can't get mail, no one does anything about it. Congratulations to the Arch District, they've seemed to had a great, a great event and a turnout of their event, and I see that they're reaching out to find other ways to finance their their hobby. I want to talk about the lagoon. I heard on one of our radio programs that the head director of Marine Resources Council, they have the topographical photographs in it, and most of the lagoon looks not good. But there is one spot that was an anomaly, and for some reason, it seemed to be better than all the other areas. Well, I don't know what you guys did with the little rough crude sketch I gave you of my district, of what I do, and that's in Mr. Smith's district, but that's where it's coming from. I am the anomaly. You check with the director, she'll give you the photograph, you can see my work, and it's evident, I have it on photograph, with pictures of all kinds of things of what I do. And no one seems to be cared, considerate enough to take my advice or my things. I wanted to talk about the taxes. Paying for security of my property, and everybody comes and does what they want, I can't even have a mailbox. It destroys everything. And then I have to pay for wastewater when my property's destroyed, and I have flooding that I never had before, and it's just getting worse and worse. And now they have more construction behind me, which is going to put more water, and that all used to be wetlands. All the water soaked into the ground, not running down the road, not putting in retention ponds, not going to lagoon. And also, the anomaly, I don't think it had anything to do with the sewage treatment, right? It looks good, and not from anything, all the other monies and everything in Florida, and nobody can compare with what I've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tovey. I see a whole bunch of folks up there. Sally, do we have anyone else that's looking to jump in on public comment?
No.
No one? Okay. All right, perfect, just wanted to make sure. Now let's, if it's all right with staff and with my fellow commissioners, I'd like to jump into some of the Jays and Juliet items, just to get them out of the way, I think they'll be fairly straightforward. Let's start up, if we may, with J1, which is the approval for the contract for sale and purchase with addendum from property owner Humphreys for the C-09 lift station improvement project. And Ms. Bentley, I don't know how much of this needs to be read into the record, but I'm, I'm happy to accept a motion at any point in time. I'm good? Okay, if anyone wants to make a motion, I know this is in D2, and I'm perfectly happy with it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, motion from Commissioner Riznardi.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Pritchett. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you all. All right, next up, we're going to go to J2, which is the contract for sale and purchase for the Pico parcel, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, for the F-1 lift station project, also in D2, and I'm happy to accept a motion on this one as well.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and a second from Commissioner Riznardi. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, let's go to J3, if we may. Commissioner Tabia, this is your item, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On November 12th, we discussed whether it was proper to have commissioners' names on project signs, such as when roads are being repaired or new ones are being constructed. In retrospect, I was wrong. I certainly listened to what other commissioners had to say about the informational aspects of having our names on signs, and I took it to heart. As such, I have drafted a new policy that reflects the argument of my fellow commissioners. This policy would require our names to be put on certain signs, particularly when it might be useful for residents to know who to call. For instance, there are often signs on the lagoon when water is no longer fit for human contact due to pollution. As commissioners pointed out, the buck stops with us, so we should own these issues. This would also provide information to constituents who receive boil water notices through our mailing lists and on social media. Thus, it simply would be hypocritical to vote against this. I do have a rendering here of a sign of what it would look like, I pulled this off of the-
Thank you.
Florida Today, and just added-
Commissioner, would you like to hold it up for the TV as well? Just so they can get that on there?
Oh, you can give it to them, so I can put it in overhand.
Thank you, Don. Just thinking for the folks that are here to see it. Here we go.
So, Mr. Chair, this would provide more information to constituents without having additional cost to taxpayers. The policy is attached, the agenda. Upon discussion, I'd like to make a motion for approval of such policy.
All right, we have a motion. And then Commissioner Pritchett, I see your light. Does anyone care to second it at the moment?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, we have a second for Commissioner Riznardi. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I personally, in my, in my district, we don't, I, it's not a thing I want to do is have a names on signs, but here's the thing, you guys, you're educated, wonderful commissioners, I don't, I think you guys are all grown up enough to decide what you want to do and what you don't want to do. You know, it's the people you're serving. I'm not going to mandate a resolution to tell you guys what you have to do or don't have to do. You're elected into this position, you need to make those decisions on what your constituents want from you. So I, I don't know why we're doing this again, and so I, I'm, I'm not going to enforce anything on you guys to do something that you need to do in your own district unless you're doing something illegal, but then there's already laws in place to do that, so.
Yeah, seeing no other lights, I do want to comment on this briefly. I was, I don't know, one of, I was an individual who didn't indicate that I thought folks would reach out as a result of my name being on a sign or not being on a sign, so I don't fall in that particular boat. But looking at what was proposed in this particular agenda item, at least in isolation, if you look under Roman numeral 2-sub-B, it talks about having a whole slew of different things, including the name, the district designation, the email address, and the office phone number of the commissioner and whose project the notice applies. I'm just worried, depending on the particular sign, the sign that, that we had up on the projector a moment ago, I don't know that that would be an issue, but if we're talking about something that's visible from the road, I don't really feel comfortable with people texting or writing down or trying to take a photograph of all this information as they're otherwise driving. I don't know that that's really the safest thing. And I really, I'm with Commissioner Pritchett, I absolutely have had opportunities to have my name included in sign design, and I've shot them down every, every time it's come up as a possibility. But I don't want to micromanage and start interfering with the autonomy of the individual commissioners in their districts. I don't have any desire to have my name on really anything here, but I don't know that I'm comfortable going that extra step over and above that and saying that no one can have it for any reason, or in this case, which it's been modified to, to mandate that they have it, along with all sorts of other info. So I, you know, I respect the idea, I respect the motive for it, but I don't know that I can support it as it's written. Any further discussion? All right, Commissioner Tabia?
I'm just, help me here, get across the, you know, I use the word hypocrisy. Why is it okay to have names on the positives that the county does, but on the shortcomings, you know, the, the pollution that goes into the lagoon, the things that we actually do get phone calls about? I know, my office doesn't get phone calls about, you know, the brand-new paved roads, "Thank you, Commissioner," you know, such-and-such for allocating funds, but we do get calls about when, when there are spills and when lines break and all that stuff. It seems that, you know, it was brought up by multiple commissioners on, on this board that this is used for informational purposes. They want their name up there so they can get credit, but when we make, when we don't meet the minimum mandates up here, why, why, why then should we not? Help me here.
Well, it sounds like the question's directed to me, so I'll take it on. First off, I don't believe I'm in the boat that was suggesting that it was used or is often used for informational purposes. That may be, it may not be, I didn't espouse an opinion as to that point when this came up at the last meeting, but I would suggest, as far as the name being only associated with positive things, if you go to the wastewater treatment plants, at least in my district, it has all the commissioners' names, so if we're talking about a leaking wastewater treatment plant, the names are up there, and if someone wants to look at that and be upset, they're welcome to be upset, just as they can look at something on a positive project or when a wastewater treatment plant's operating properly, and be happy and, and give praises as desired to the commissioners that are, are in the particular district that they live in. So I, you know, I understand where you're coming from, I just, you know, I don't know that this isn't really a solution in search of a problem, but again, everyone's welcome to their views, so if you want to have me call the question, I'm happy to do it, unless there's further discussion. Commissioner Riznardi?
Yeah, I don't have a problem, per se, with the sign, I would just like it, you know, if we're going to do this, I don't have a problem if people call our office to ask questions, because that's, you know, exactly the reason why I wanted the ability, because we do, I don't, your office may not get calls for roads, but our office gets called quite frequently, even when they're not our roads. I mean, A1A is an example, and other projects, construction projects we have going on. But I would at least ask that the sign say, "For informational purposes, you may contact utility services or the commissioner," in that way, at least it's clear, because that looks like a, a sign that's blaming the office more than, than asking, you know, inviting people to inquire. So as far as promotion, I've never seen my sign, my name on a sign in my district. I mean, it may exist, but that's how, that's how visible that would be for me, at least in my district. So it's, for me, it's not about whether my name's on or not on a sign, because obviously, I don't consider myself a subject matter expert in utility and sewage line breakage and repair, but I want to be able to answer people's questions if they have them. So I don't have a problem with my name on the sign at all. So, I don't have a problem with my name on the sign at all. I just want a clear, you know, contact, as a contact source, more so than a, you know, an "or" utility services, so it's clear to people that, you know, that's where they're going to gain their information, because the contamination may have nothing to do with anything the county has done. So, it's not our project if the water, if the algae level's high and it has nothing to do with an Indian River lagoon sewage spill, you know, because those make me as angry as they make you. But, you know, we have other bodies of water contaminated that have zero to do with anything that the county's doing or has done in the area. So, I'm happy to provide information, though, to residents if I have it.
Makes sense. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, so that's kind of the point. If you feel a need to do it, or if it's something that you think would help your constituents find you, I, I know, you guys, we get hundreds of calls all week long on things, so I give my cellphone number out, and so I think I have pretty good contact with my community, but again, that's with you guys. You have bigger growing areas than I do, so if you feel that's a need that you want to do, I, it doesn't matter. So, if, Chris, Commissioner Riznardi, so if it's something you want to do, I support you on it, but I'm not going to mandate that you do it or don't do it. You know, you're a grown-up commissioner, so you can make the decision.
All right, any further discussion on it? I believe we do have a motion, and we did have a second on that, is that right? I think it was seconded by Commissioner Riznardi? All right. Seeing no further discussion, I'm going to go ahead and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh. Ms. Bentley, how do we, how do we go ahead and address that if we had someone that made a mistake in the middle of the vote?
Just, I could start over.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that up here? Anyone not? Absolutely? Okay, thank you. Yeah, now's your opportunity, Commissioner. All right, let's go ahead and start that over again. All in favor of passing item J is in Juliet 3, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to J is in Juliet 3? Nay? Okay, so we have Commissioner Tabia and Commissioner Riznardi in the affirmative, and the remainder of us in the negative. It fails two, three. All right, we're going to move here, just trying to balance time, because we do have a time certain at 6:00. We're going to move back to H's and Hotel 1. The, the puns, oh, yeah, let's get back. I don't, I think if we start that, we may end up with a bit of a problem in terms of timing. So, let's go back, if we may, to H's and Hotel 1.
Do you want to explain while we're not going on the next one?
Yeah, just briefly, that's a good point. The reason we're not going to address J's and Juliet 4 is I know that there are quite a few people, and I don't think that we can get through that prior to 6:00, where we do have a time certain item that we're going to have to move on to. So, rather than cutting it in pieces and basically making it a little less cohesive, I'd rather have all of the commentary on one item kept together, whether it's for against or otherwise. So, we're moving back to H's and Hotel 1. I don't know if we should have staff introduce it, or if there's a preference. Thank you. Thank you. There is a public comment card, and just before we call that, I did want to make one brief comment on this particular item. The biggest concern that I have, and again, I wish, but for sunshine, this could have been resolved, if you look at page 280, about midway in, where it says "new," it talks about US Department of Agriculture licensed commercial breeder, and then it goes on, and it has some new language talking about unresolved, critical, or direct noncompliant items, and then it also amends from 48 months down to 24 months, addressing the period in which the violation may have occurred. The concern that I have is sort of twofold. First off, with that word "unresolved" preceding the word "critical," I don't know that that was ever mentioned when we previously discussed this in commission meetings, and my other concern with "unresolved" is that by including that, you're essentially taking what was 48 and is now proposed to be 24, and rendering it totally irrelevant, basically saying in the preceding zero months, because even if someone had a finding against them for having done the most heinous of heinous things, if it's resolved, then they can operate instantaneously after that. So, I would be in favor of passing this, but for that word "unresolved," I would propose that we simply strike through it. I don't know, Commissioner Pritchett, if you'd like to hear from Teresa Clifton. I know she's put in a card, or if you'd like to go first, however you'd like to do it.
Maybe I can explain one more thing here.
Sure.
And then you can have her come up. The other thing on that same paragraph, sir, if you opened up what I just opened there, this is the part we put in, and I don't think I can pass it with that in it, and let me tell you why. Not that I don't hate the thought of people doing really perverted things to dogs, but, you know, as far as a business, and then making them go ahead, do an extra step, trying to figure out background reports, or going to the sheriff, I think we're putting an undue burden on businesses that are good businesses. So, as far as stopping puppy mills, it's still, it's a horrible thing. I'm not sure that that's going to do anything, and it really deviated from where we were when we had this ordinance put in on the first time, so I think we kind of need to strike that, because I think it's putting a little bit too much pressure on a store owner when they're buying inventory. Not that I don't think it's horrible, but if, you know, if you're going to do that, you know, we're going to have to look at other businesses as far as, you know, have people molested children and all these types of things, you know, and so I think we've kind of maybe overstepped our bounds right there when we're writing an ordinance, sir.
Yeah, I don't see any further discussion, so I'll jump in on this one. As far as them being good businesses, if they have critical or direct noncompliant items, those aren't good businesses. If they have violations of Chapter 828 of Florida statutes for things along the lines of having sex with dogs, those aren't good businesses. These are not the people that we want to protect. These aren't people that comply with the rules that society has already put in place. We're not instituting additional rules for them in the sense that other things are illegal for them to do with or pertaining to animals. This is simply saying, if you've done one of these things that society recognizes as heinous, and we've gone over this, I think, in the prior meeting when this came up, we're saying, this isn't something like a light bulb not working, or an exit sign not working, or there being something that's minuscule that really doesn't go toward the genuine health and welfare of an animal. This is something that is a profound indiscretion. I don't know that indiscretion's really a strong enough word, a profound issue, and I think we're basically taking the teeth of the ordinance out if we put in the word "unresolved," because anyone can do anything they want without exception, and then as long as it's resolved, five minutes later, they can go right back into business. So, this really won't do much of anything, apart from the good of having the information on the side of kennels or conspicuously posted. Really, other than that, if we include this word "unresolved," you know, we have a huge problem. I know that when this was discussed, the last time it came up here, there was a concern that was bounced, I believe, by you, Commissioner Pritchett, by way of the sheriff, that he couldn't get records beyond 24 months. I'm fine with that. That's totally reasonable to take it from 48 and make it 24, if 48 is something that he doesn't feel he can enforce anyway, but you're taking 24, I wouldn't even put 24, and you might as well say in the preceding zero months, because at that point, nothing counts.
I agree with you on that. I'm good with that one.
So, as far as striking "unresolved"?
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that. My struggle is this extra part we added in last time. I think we need to strike that, too, and I'll strike the unresolved, so...
So, how would we have it read if, I apologize for being at all...
No, no problem, sir. On the copy I gave you, I put in all these colors, so...
Thank you. I have Christmas colors.
Yeah, have no documented. Then we'll strike out "unresolved," "critical," or "direct noncompliant items," and that's what the USDA filed respectors report in the preceding 24-month period by any governmental agency or entity.
And I, you know, again, I'll just say with respect to that, if it's this or nothing, I'll take this. I'm not really thrilled to make the change. I will tell you that, you know, certainly this would be permitting a state cause of animal abuse to be something that's wholly okay, as long as there's not a federal case that involves that as well. And oftentimes, if the state is investigating something, the feds will leave it alone, just as if the feds are investigating something, the state will leave it alone. I'll support that, if that's what we need to do, but I just think it's concerning, because it's saying a lot of unacceptable behavior is now going to be okay.
I hate unacceptable behavior, too, but there's a whole list of things also that kind of turn my stomach, but it's, as far as this, this gets some having to abide by the laws that are in place. So, we've done a lot there, we're making, see, my goal is never to put undue burden on store owners, yours either, but the goal now is, is to make sure that they're complying with laws that are in place, so they have to do these things. And there's one other thing, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for calling me Mrs. Chair. I've gotten that a few times so far.
And three, when we put this information in there...
Sure.
Well, hobby breeders aren't going to have all those unique USDA license numbers, so I put in there that if an animal's from a commercial breeder, and then down here, we have the hobby breeder required requirements in there, too, so...
And again, with this, just to bring folks that are there on board, I'll just read the portion that's changed and what's proposed. So, pet stores shall post in the conspicuous location the following information, if an animal is from a commercial breeder, one breed, two, unique animal identification number, three is stricken, which had name of breeder, city, and state of origin, and four, USDA licensee's certificate number. The posting requirements apply regardless of the animal's place of origin, and then it adds hobby breeder information shall be given to the owner if requested at purchase. And again, I think this is definitely a step backward.
Really?
Having the city and the state taken out of there really does take a lot of the info out, and if...
Okay, I'll leave that in for the...
Yeah, if you don't want the name, I can deal with the name being on.
I'll do that for the, for the commercial ones, then, but the hobby breeders, if they're from local, I want to protect them.
And I wouldn't have a problem with that, I just, I kind of cringe...
Well, the sheriff can go in and ask any time, and so can a person purchasing.
Well, the person purchasing, I believe we had at least one individual that may have come here. I think it was in a commission meeting, I don't think it was outside. I may be wrong, though. I did have an individual tell me, either here or in my office, that they requested exactly that information, and they were told which way the exit was. That's kind of putting...
Well, they called the sheriff and get it right away, but, you know, they don't have a lot of hobby breeder puppies they're selling. They're almost all from the USDA.
Yeah, my concern, though, is there's really no way to be able to enforce that if all they have to do is say, "Well, it's a hobby breeder," and then every five minutes, they get the sheriff out there. I just, I don't want to put the sheriff in a bad spot.
Well, let me throw out an instance. In our city, we have a little couple that has a little store, and people will have puppies, and they can't raise the puppies.
Sure.
So, they'll bring them in to these people, and they're wonderful, they're real dog people, and so they'll let people come in, if they're interested in the dog, they can go see the dogs, and they're careful with them. If you have a cold, you can't even see the puppies. But I, just things like that, you have little businesses like that, and like, if somebody was trying to sell their puppies, I'm not sure that we need their names out, unless they're going to buy the puppies.
Well, if we're saying that it has to be made available anyway, I just, I think there's a little bit of a split.
Well, the sheriff can, or the person that's bought them, but you do have problems with people that are a little aggressive, and again, I'm protecting the other individual at that point. You know, the sheriff will have full capability, whoever buys it well, but if there's aggressive people, I don't think they should get that information.
Commissioner Riznardi?
There we go. I'm kind of in agreement with Commissioner Pritchett in the sense that I would rather go the path of least restriction, and we can always come back and modify if necessary, and if it continues to be a problem, or if we're finding that there's cases where, you know, we're not able to track down where these animals are coming from, then that's something we can address then, because I think, I think that's the safe option, because it's much easier, because I don't want to even hurt a hobby breeder.
I understand.
You know what I mean? Because usually, they're actually the most responsible of the group than any retail store that I've ever seen, so I would rather, at least myself, I'd be more supportive of going toward the path of least restriction and address a problem if and when it occurs.
Okay, and that, that's a perfectly valid point. With respect to, just to make sure that I'm understanding what's currently proposed, so from what you passed out, which will make sure that the clerk has a copy of, just, do you all have a copy already?
And this is the multicolored version.
This is the red, blue, black, and green version that's got strike throughs and underlines.
Merry Christmas. It sounds a lot worse than it is, but there's actually only a couple of changes from the original document.
Yeah, Commissioner, why don't, if it's okay with you, why don't you just go through the changes so that we have a clear motion for them?
Okay, so for the one I handed out, Ms. Bentley, we're going to go ahead and cross out the word "unresolved" also, and then all those other strikeouts will remain, except the strikeout that I did on city and state and origin, number three, we're going to go ahead and put that one back in.
Okay.
And I'll give my copy to the clerk.
Perfect, I appreciate it. Yeah, I've already kind of adulterated by writing all over it, but you all will have that, so I guess, at this point, probably the best thing to do would be to call up public comment on it. Ms. Clifton? Apologize for having you wait a little bit on this. And Ms. Bentley, is this a three or a five?
I'm sorry.
Is this three or five? The three?
Two.
All right, Ms. Clifton, I apologize.
That's okay. Thank you for giving this so much attention. I would like to thank, Teresa Clifton, Brevard Humane Society, sorry. I just want to thank the commissioners for your service to our community. You have a lot of things that come before you, which in our community includes our pets, so even though I know they're, they're not on the top of the food chain, but they're in there, and I do really sincerely appreciate y'all going through this very much and taking the time to look at those few little details, because it is all in the details, and I'm glad that we, y'all didn't get bogged down in the schematics of things. It warms my heart to know that you're willing to compromise to at least keep something so that in our community, businesses that want to come in and open up know that we care about the animals in our community, and even though it is a business, that they are going to be handled in a respectful manner. It means a lot to the animals, and because they can't come up here and tell you that, I felt it necessary to do so myself, and how much I admire all of you, even those of you that are not really into this, I do really appreciate you taking the time to pay attention to it, because even though it may not close down a puppy mill, it discourages businesses from opening that will think it's okay to bring animals from outside of our community from puppy mills. So, even if it just prevents one from coming in, it has done its job, so I'm greatly appreciative of that, and I think that maybe an animal abuse registry would be an awesome thing that we could use as a other means of checking into people who should not have pets, and so I really do appreciate your time, and I don't want to take any more time with it, because I know you have other, more pressing things happening, just from the bottom of my heart. Thank you so much for taking this time to make sure that the animals are taken care of as well. We really do greatly appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Ms. Clifton. And just on that same topic, I think it's something that a lot of folks may not know. If they know, then, I guess I was kind of late to the game to find out. I did learn not too long ago that our sheriff has instituted a policy since he's come in, where if a municipality declines to investigate an allegation of violation of Chapter 828, so something along the lines of animal abuse, if the municipal police department will not investigate it, BCSO has been advised to go ahead and investigate that if the municipal police department will not do so. I think that's a, you know, a huge effort that the sheriff has put on animal services, but it's certainly a good one. I think that the community, the folks that I've spoken with about it thus far have been universally in favor of it. I can tell you that in the past week, I've spoken with Joe Hellebrand, who's the director of animal services, and one of the things that they investigated in my district and found it's a violation of 828, is they had someone that actually cut a dog's throat. So, that's something that, you know, certainly, I'm very happy to see investigated by law enforcement, I'm very happy to see it go to the courts, and I'm very happy to see justice served when it serves, so I just, regardless of any other policies, I think that's an objectively good policy that really no one's criticized or really could criticize.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, Teresa, for all of your hard work in the community. People who don't know Teresa Clifton, I mean, I would be really shocked if you didn't know who she is, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but the thing that I admire most about Teresa is that she doesn't let the emotion and how she feels about animals and how she cares about animals get in the way of rational decision-making, and I appreciate that, because you ultimately have the same goal in mind, and I think one important message that you said, and I often believe it, too, and live by it, like, the animals can't tell us, they can't speak for themselves, so, because if they could, this room obviously would be full, but, but, I mean, I'm glad that there's people like you and people in our community that have their best interests at heart, because they do bring us a lot of joy, and unfortunately, people don't treat them properly, and they view them more as a method of profit. So, I think that this, these new solutions you brought to the board, Commissioner Loebert, is a good, is a good compromise, it's a good step in the right direction, and again, it aids in the, in the prevention of a, of a commercial business profiting from a puppy mill. I mean, that's, that's basically what it is. So, thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett? Commissioner Pritchett?
I too want to thank you, Commissioner Loebert, for spending all the time putting this together.
You as well.
And weeding through it. I appreciate it a lot. I'm thinking also, as we before, under the state of Florida, just up the ante on some of these things also. And there are wonderful rescue organizations, but there's some really bad ones too. So, maybe we should start kicking that around, because since we did this last time, there was a rescue organization that was just not taking care of the animals. The police had to go in and take them all out and find homes. So, that might be something, I don't know if we're going to have to do at a state level or whatever. But since I've been doing a lot of research on this, there's some really shysty people out there that are under the guise of that, and they're doing really, really horrible... They're probably getting a lot of puppy mill dogs. I think that might be something we need to try to figure out how to get some kind of oversight with. So, just a thought for you in your spare time?
Sure.
So...
Yeah, I will throw out there as well, just since we're talking about potential items on the same general topic in the future. A week from today, we will have that animal abuse registry draft in front of the commission, at least for discussion, if not a vote. I put in some time, my staff has put in some considerable time. We've had folks at the clerk's office who've been very helpful, spoken with Jeff and Lois in IT about it, who've been very helpful. The county attorney's office has been helpful. And it's in a state where I think we could pass it where it is next week if the commission's in favor. But we're going to have something to discuss. And Ms. Clifton, if you want to come back, you're more than welcome. But again, I don't want to pressure you. You already do so much with respect to animal causes. But with that said, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to make the changes. And then, do you all have a copy of it at this point? Or you do? Okay, perfect.
I make a motion to approve the resolution with the changes that we discussed tonight.
I'll go ahead and second it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have Commissioners Tobia and Smith opposed, the remainder of us in the affirmative. So, passes three, two. And we're coming up on six o'clock where we have our time certain, so I'm just going to be kind of careful with what we take on here, so that we don't run too much later. Thank you. So, item H2 is a request for approval for an amendment to Section 78, Article III at Division 1, Section 78 hyphen 82 at Division 2, Section 78 dash 108 of the Brevard County Code of Ordinances. And with respect to that, again, it's item H's in hotel two. I don't know if we'd like to have staff introduce it. Mary Ellen?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mary Ellen Donner, Brevard County Parks and Recreation Department Director. Before you, you have a request to amend Section 78 with regards to polling station election signage. There was a, July 1st, a state statute change that made two major changes to the statute. One was to increase the 150-foot, 100 to 150-foot supervisor of election jurisdiction. The second was that only political signs would be displayed during polling hours. So, we looked at our four early polling stations at Kiwanis Island Park, Rhodes Park, Viera Regional Park, and Wickham Park, and are proposing a change to our ordinance that would only allow political signs during polling hours. So, if there were political signs that were posted prior to opening poll hours or after polls closed, my staff, our staff, would remove those signs, take them to a predetermined location where candidates could actually go and pick them up if they wished to post them the next day. We would allow, of course, the signs to be picked up, but we would also make sure that we were notified, notifying the candidates prior to polling station opening. We did that during the last election by emailing all of the representatives and/or candidates that were running. So, that was the first part. In response to an audit finding that we had an audit conference, we did add another section from when we talked to you last. We were looking to remove the necessity for a patron to show a photo ID and/or sign a waiver. What we have found is that many of our patrons called in for reservations, and it was problematic in getting them in. They either didn't have access to a computer or weren't able to come into our offices. So, those recommendations were in fact noticed as per the public hearing, and that's where we are, looking for recommendations from the Board of County Commissioners.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I'm good with it. We spent a little time talking about this in detail. So, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve your recommendations.
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Zardine?
I'm okay with supporting this, because I think sometimes it gets out of control, especially when you go on the weekend and you're taking your kids to the park. I mean, it's been years for me since they were little enough to go to, for mom to take them to the park. But I know it can be overwhelming, and people do complain. And, you know, you are responsible for your property. I would just say, if it seems like, come back to us if it seems like you're picking up the signs. Because if you're picking up signs at two or three places and bringing them to a distinct location, you're doing the candidate a favor, essentially, because they're not having to pick them up at the park, right? Because you're, they're just going to the location of the designated sign, you know, collection, and they're picking up all their signs. So, you've done a service for them. So, I just want us to be careful, you know? Or maybe the message needs to be that we're not responsible for those signs. You know, we'll pick them up as a courtesy, but, you know, if we don't have them, because I don't want us to be liable for them either. Does that make sense?
All right, anything further? All right, so we had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, next item is H's in hotel three. This deals with extending the term of appointment from one year to two years on the P&amp;Z board for the appointees. And again, if there's discussion, I'm happy to entertain that. Otherwise, if someone would like to make a motion...
Make a motion to approve?
Second?
Second from Commissioner Zardine. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, H's in hotel three passed unanimously. Moving right along to H's in hotel four. This dealing with extending the term from one to two years on the contractors licensing board for the appointees.
Make a motion to approve?
Second?
Second from Commissioner Zardine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. H's in hotel five. This is dealing with extending from one year to two years the term of appointment for appointees on the Historical Commission.
I make a motion to approve?
Second?
Second from Commissioner Zardine. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay, one nay there. Commissioner Tobia, everyone else in the affirmative. So, passes four, one. And then H6, and then we'll move on to the time certain after this. So, it's an ordinance adjusting the term of appointment from one year to two years for the Board of Adjustment.
I make a motion to approve?
Second?
Second from Commissioner Zardine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Actually, you know, it looks like we have time for one last prior to moving to the time certain. We'll go to H7. This extends the term from one year to two years on the Personnel Council term of appointees from one to two years.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Second again from Commissioner Zardine, a motion from Mr. Pritchett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, and we are at six o'clock. Perfect.
Wow, you couldn't have timed that any better.
Housekeeping.
Perfecto. All right, we have a whole bunch of cards. I did want, if the commissioners are okay with it, just to have Mr. Abate introduce the item. Then what we'll do is we'll kind of see where folks are at, invite public commentary if they still wish to speak. And then we'll go from there. Is that okay with everyone? All right, Mr. Abate?
Thank you, Commissioner. This item deals with the Sea Ray Drive Bridge. As you'll recall, during Hurricane Irma, we had a problem there with the bridge. One of the important issues that arose at that time was a water line which provided service on beachside to Patrick Air Force Base, the port, and other areas. So, it was a critically important bridge, and with that water line attached to it, because of that and other problems we're having with the only other access to water for beachside, also having been compromised during that storm, we reached out to the Army Corps of Engineers through FEMA and the state to see if we could get emergency repairs, temporary emergency repairs done to the bridge. The state came back to us and told us that they would be willing to support that initiative under the condition that we come back to the board and ask the board to pass an emergency resolution that would assure the state, give them the assurances that they wanted, that we would conduct the permanent repairs that were necessary to that bridge for the long term. The board held an emergency session during September of 2017. That resolution was passed, and the Army Corps then moved forward after the state supported that action in making those temporary repairs to the bridge. That included armoring underneath the area of the bridge. We were anticipating at that time that that would be somewhere in the area of $500,000 to $1 million perhaps worth of work to be done. In fact, when the Army Corps went out for a contract on that, the cost was close to $5 million. Rather than move forward in that way, the Army Corps did that work in-house at a cost to the Army Corps of approximately $3 million. That was not money that was paid by the county, that was paid by them. However, what we had at that point was an obligation to move forward with either the repair or replacement of the bridge in the future, in a reasonably foreseeable future as we committed to the state. In fact, we moved forward with that. We dealt with the Florida Department of Transportation, who had a number of concerns about, you know, how that would move forward. We did that. We got a consultant on board, and we came up with three options. Those three options are part of this agenda request. Those options range anywhere from $2.79 million to $4.9 million. The $2.79 million option is a repair. There are certain, and you'll see that in the agenda report in detail, there's certain observations that staff has made concerning that repair. Some of them, first, we believe that the cost could be substantially higher, even though that's an estimate we had. It's almost like the same kind of estimate that occurred with the Army Corps. When you get there, because of the armor that's been done underneath it and other steps there, it could be significantly higher. So, we noted that in the agenda report. We also noted that there are certain disadvantages by doing a temporary repair, because the bridge already currently has crutches on that near the pilings. You may have to add that. If you do that, that can have a negative impact to navigation. It could also have a negative impact because of the water flow would be further restricted to the lagoon. And so, those are potential problem, not problems, challenges that are brought up, or problems perhaps, with that type of repair. If we move forward with, instead of a repair, replacement of the bridge, that would have some positive aspects. Of course, that's a $4.9 million expenditure. That's what the estimate would be. There's two estimates between $4.7 and $4.9 million. We wouldn't have the crutches anymore. There would be an improvement to navigation. You'd also have an improvement to water flow and the lagoon, because the crutches wouldn't be there. And you also have the potential in the longer term that there would be advantages as it relates to FDOT, perhaps at the 528 portion of that, the bridge that's close to ours, the height would be, might be higher of that particular replaced bridge, so that when they replace their section on 528, they very well might be, if that occurs, we can move forward in a way that would encourage them to raise the bridge as well, and that would be a further help to navigation. Cost, and that's a big part of where we're moving forward. Because we already had a $3 million expenditure by the state that, or an Army Corps that we weren't responsible for, there are certain dollars, and we put it in the agenda report that are available countywide that we identified. There was about $5.3 million worth of funding. If we looked at a bridge replacement at a $4.9 million cost, that's the higher of the two, what we looked at was if the board chose to redistribute the $5.3 million that we have identified that were in reserves and public works, and these are available funds that would be available throughout the county, all the piecemeal stuff that we could identify and we brought forward to the board. If you chose to distribute that, allowing you, and we talked about the Citizens Budget Review Committee also suggesting that, we tried to find additional funding through low-cost interest currently there in financing, that we make more funds available for repaving, reconstruction, and capacity issues. We moved forward and put a proposal before you that would allow us to distribute that $5.3 million based on mileage that you have in your districts. That's something that the board chose to do in 2018. That would be the board's option to do that now. That would provide about $1.2 million worth of funding for District 2 as it relates to the bridge. In addition to that monies, we are looking at something that we've done with a lot of CRAs. As you know, we have a lot of internal agreements out there now with various CRAs that we looked at, infrastructure-related improvements. The suggestion that we've put forth as one of the ideas here in this agenda is that Myra has the ability, because of what occurred, and you are the governing body, state statute made a change, saying that you can reallocate, as long as you leave 50% of TIF funding within a CRA, you can allocate a portion of future TIF dollars. You can take that back. If, in fact, you did that and took 20%, and we looked at a 20% number, which would be up to a maximum of $275,000, and you did it for a 10-year period, that funding could be used and would cover the difference between a repair of the bridge and replacement of the bridge. We also looked at what other funding might be available if we did this through some kind of financing. And what we've put in the agenda request is that if additional funds were needed outside of the funds I've already specified, we can look at that through general fund or other allocations, where if the board gave the direction, we would do it consistent with the proportionate distribution that we, that I've mentioned about having for the other districts. I think I've covered most of what is in the agenda request, but there is some more detail in there for anyone who is interested.
Thank you so much for that thorough job, Mr. Abate. Ms. Pritchett?
Commissioner Pritchett? Thank you, sir. Let me preface this by saying, Commissioner Loebert, you kind of inherited this when you came in. This has been a big topic, a very expensive topic for a while. So, I know this is something we had it put together, because I know you need to get this done. And let me also preface this by saying, when I read this, I hear a little bit of you in it. So, I have a feeling that, and we're not allowed to break sunshine law, but I'm learning how you speak.
I'm in trouble.
So, and also, due to the fact that Myra's been introduced in this, I have a feeling you've gotten comfortable with this. So, let me jump into this. I'm comfortable probably with whatever you're going to choose to do. I think, just from reading through it, I'm thinking you're going with replacement.
Yes, the less expensive of the two. Yes, ma'am.
I am getting to know you a little bit. And I'm good with that, because, you know, let me tell you, three years ago when we got on this commission, we had the Rhodes Fund laid out, and Commissioner Zardine brought up that she needed a little extra funds at the time. So, we shifted around some numbers, so she could get a very important project done in her district, and then we've evened out. And what you've done in here is you've done the same thing. You're going to have a little bit more upload, but you're going to end up getting it all back equitably to the rest of the districts. And so, for you to do this, I know it has to be an important project. So, I'm going to support what you choose to do on this. So, you found the funding for it, and you're making all the necessary sacrifices to get done what you need to get done for your district.
I appreciate that. And just before we get to public comment, there are three that I'm fairly confident
So you found the funding for it, and you're making all the necessary sacrifices to get done what you need to get done for your district.
I appreciate that. And just before we get to public comment, there are three that I'm fairly confident will speak, as I anticipate they will. There's one who may speak against it, I'm not sure. But I certainly would invite public comment in a moment, but before I do that, I just do want to, oh, Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This may help with some of the comment, as you know, these folks are potentially counting votes. I want to thank you for the creative ways that you look to solve this problem, because many times, myself included, we bring issues up here, but we lack solutions. And here you've brought a funding model forward for an issue that centers in your district, but certainly has other folks that use that bridge that don't exclusively live in your district. So you took the brunt of this, and I greatly appreciate you making that sacrifice. So initially, I looked at this skeptically, in all honesty, but I could not have found a more equitable way to do this, and I greatly appreciate, I will be strongly supporting this.
Thank you, sir. And just making sure there are no more lights here before I continue. So just to kind of jump on with respect to this, and I'm not going to talk too much, because Mr. Abate did a stellar job better than I could in terms of presenting this item. There was a lot of work that was done on the staff side to basically turn over every rock. I did a lot of work trying to turn over rocks that, or even things that looked like rocks, to figure out what we could do to try to fund this. I met with EDT to see if there were any federal options in terms of grants. I reached out to the port, spoke with them, spoke with Myra's staff. There were a lot of rocks that were kicked over, over a long period of time. Looking at this, and looking again, both at the impact on the lagoon, the impact on navigability, and the slim but potential that FDOT may consider the height of the bridge in designing 528, which is on a hold at the moment, that coupled with the lifespan increase on this, going from a design life of 21 years to repair it, where we would leave the lagoon worse off and leave navigability no better off, to going to over three times, almost four times, the lifespan, even for the less expensive of the two replacements, it just strikes me as something where, looking at the cost, it's a no-brainer. Obviously, to say it's a no-brainer is easy enough, but to figure out how to pay for it is a little tougher. Myra, in my individual discussions with the folks that are on the board, I see Ms. Ellis is here, from Myra, as is Larry Lalo, the executive director, they were very understanding. I can tell you that when I broached the topic, some of the concerns that I heard from Myra, from the various individuals that I'd spoken with, were, well, if we're paying just to repair it, we're not really keeping with the function and the purpose of Myra to improve the district. We'd actually be leaving it worse off than we found it. And in the sense that we would harm flow and we'd harm navigability, that's certainly true. I think this is something that really benefits everyone in the area. I certainly am happy to hear from the folks, and if you're here to speak in support of it, you can certainly take your full three minutes, and if you don't want to, seeing as it seems fairly clear here, you know, no one's going to hold you to it. But I really appreciate the work that staff's put in on this, and I think, you know, I don't want to take more credit than is owed, but I've done everything I could to try to find a way to make this work, and I appreciate the recognition that this is really a good option for everyone. So with that, I'll go ahead and call public comment. If you want to come up, you're welcome to. If you want to waive your time, you're welcome to do that as well, but I'm not by any means suggesting that that's what you do. From Merritt Island, I'll just save you. Unless I neglect to mention your name or your city, if you want to just start up, you can get the full three minutes.
Okay, this is Larry Rockliff, 3255 Spartina Avenue, Merritt Island. I put my name down, in fact, to support the issue at hand, but I think that, I'll keep it very short, simply to say that as a resident north of the Barge Canal, my wife and I happen to be one of probably the minority who are very much in favor of progress versus keeping the status quo on that side. This issue of the Sykes Creek Bridge, or Sea Ray Drive Bridge, has now been over two years, and I think that that which staff has done, which the work forward to try and get it repaired, all sounds extremely positive. My position on it would be that although it's an inconvenience, it's not an insurmountable inconvenience, but that after two years of stagnation, something has to be done, either to have it closed permanently or put back into a condition where it can become a functional artery. Having said that, the port is growing, the Space Center is growing, Cape Canaveral is growing, so any access to and from the north part of Merritt Island is going to be a plus. And so to that end, I would encourage you to vote in favor of progressing with a permanent fix, so that this can be an additional artery to support also 528. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, we have Wayne Stratford from Melbourne.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Wayne Stratford, live at 593 Spring Lake Drive in Melbourne. First of all, I'm very encouraged to hear that you're considering the replacement option. I think that's outstanding. Although I live locally in Suntree, I am a customer of Harbor Town Marina, keep a boat there, and I have for the last 21 years. Over the course of that time, it's given me the opportunity to see, unfortunately, the economic impact that closure of Sea Ray Drive has had on the local businesses. Harbor Town Marina, Sea Ray Yachts, Merritt Island Boat Works, Ocean Alexander, the Cruise Parking. So the focus of my message tonight is, please accelerate to the greatest extent that you can the full replacement of this bridge. It's important that we get that moving, because as the previous speaker said, it has been dormant for two years. We do need to move on. In addition to the adverse effect on economic viability of those businesses, there's also the safety aspect. We have emergency vehicles that need to get to those businesses, police, fire, ambulances, and they can easily be stymied if they're not familiar with that bridge being closed, if they inadvertently approach it from the wrong end. We also have a large homeless population. I think one thing everyone can agree on is that as a country, we need to humanely address the homeless population. Unfortunately, this homeless camp which resides between the closed bridge and Harbor Town Marina, where the road is closed, that population is encouraged to increase because it gets no traffic down there. So that, we need to keep that in mind as we move forward. I think we need to open that road back up again. I'm painfully aware of funding restrictions and budget realities, but I think, I applaud your efforts in finding a way to replace this bridge. I agree that the temporary fix is not appropriate, and it'd be more detrimental in the long run. And so finally, I'll close by saying, you know, this is a piece of key infrastructure in our county, and I would encourage you to accelerate the replacement of this bridge, and let that be your legacy here for this commission. Okay? So, thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. All right, next up, we have Jan Shinupa. Thank you for giving me the phonetic on here as well.
I've described many ways.
And you're from Merritt Island?
Yes. 4325 Brandon Lane, Merritt Island. And I just, my husband and I moved here about a year and a half ago. We always worked in the area, and I just love it here. I love all the waterways. It's a very beautiful area to live, and I love where I live. And I really thank you for all the work that you've put into it, and look forward to what comes ahead with it, and thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, ma'am. All right, looks like last but not least, Wendy Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Wendy Ellis. I'm with the Merritt Island Redevelopment Agency, 3400 South Tropical Trail, Merritt Island, Florida. This is a project that needs to be done. This project is in our redevelopment area. It's not in our redevelopment plan, because this occurred after our plan was formed. We, this would be a very good economic development project for the businesses on Sea Ray Drive, for the port land on Sea Ray Drive, and I'm very much in support of the project. We want to thank Commissioner Loeb for, you know, finding a creative solution to work this out, and we want to be good partners with the county, and we just appreciate your support, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Wendy. All right, don't have any further cards on that. Just a few comments with respect to that before we get a motion, because there are a couple of things that I would ask that whoever makes a motion contemplate including in there. First off, as far as the amount, and I'm just, let me call your attention to 325 in the packet, roughly three-quarters or four-fifths the way down, where it starts out, since Sea Ray Drive Bridge is within the Myra Redevelopment District, it talks about withholding up to 200, I'm sorry, up to $275,000 per year, or 20% of Myra's general fund tax increment. That, I have no problem with that by any means, I think that's a reasonable number, but I would ask a couple considerations with that, that if Myra's board requests to pay more than that, and I don't know that that will ever happen, either to pay it off earlier, that we permit staff to withhold more if their board is okay with that.
20%?
Right, 20, so 20% or with their board's approval, more. Up to 275 or with Myra's board's approval, more. The other thing that I do want to call your attention to, because this is something that instantaneously may become a problem if we don't address it on the front end, is the administrative costs for Myra are based on a percentage of what they bring in in TIF, and I don't want to put them in a position where they have, they basically are punished for doing the right thing and working with us to the extent that they can with this. So I would ask that we allow staff to withhold a greater amount than the 275 also, we could say and/or, in addition to what we just mentioned. If Myra requests it, so that we can give them back the difference that would bring them level to where they are for administrative costs. Now, I'm not looking to give them more than what they're bringing in currently for admin costs, but I am looking at making sure that we don't hurt them and punish them for doing the right thing. So if, for instance, the lower TIF that they get isn't sufficient, and it won't necessarily be sufficient to cover the three employees who are on staff in Myra, if they ask us, their board asks us to withhold something more than the 275 for the purpose of returning some of that, or paying directly the staff costs, I'd like to do that so that we don't hurt them. So those are the two considerations. Other than that, I just want to call the board's attention to the fact that I probably will at some point, if any of the local businesses request me to do it, I probably will bring some item in front of us on signage to basically waive some of the code rules for folks that don't have the ability to advertise, because the area where they advertise is inaccessible at present. So that's something for the future, but I just wanted to put that out there. For now, it's not anything I wanted to throw in to jumble up today, but just to give you all the heads up. Mr. Abate?
Yeah, two additional items. If you could also include one, the issue about the distribution of the funds, get the board's approval, because that was necessarily requested action. There is an attachment that shows how it would be distributed, and then we'd work with each district on how you would allocate those funds. And then finally, we need you to tell us which of the alternatives. I would assume it's either alternative 2A or 2B, Commissioner, that you were going to ask for.
My preference is the lower of the two replacement costs, so the Florida I-beam, which is at just over $4.9 million. That's what my preference would be. It's the cheaper of the two, and frankly, even if they were the same cost, I would still Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, and I'm going to need you to help me, County Manager, that we go ahead and move forward with the Florida I-beam.
Yes, ma'am.
Option, and that we go ahead and include the 20% withholding from Myra, and if Myra has a voted board approval to add more funds, they'll have that ability to do so also. And Mr. Abate, you're going to have to help me. I'm on this one page, I think 342. You're going to have to tell me how you're doing the funding. We talked about it yesterday.
Yeah, we would be, we'd ask the board to adopt Attachment A to distribute the funding, and then also at the end of the agenda, it references that if the board approves, and I'd be asking for that approval, that if we needed the additional funding, if it came from the general fund in the future, that we would do it in a proportionate distribution.
That's my motion.
I apologize. I know the clerks are certainly going to have their hands full typing this one up for the minutes. Ms. Bentley, do you think we need to do anything else?
May we also get permission to, or authorization to draft ordinances and bring forward as necessary regarding the changes to Myra?
Oh, yes, for that purpose.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, I'll happily second it. This is one of those speak now or forever hold your peace moments. Anything else?
Does the clerk need clarity? Any more clarity?
We can make Frank say it again.
Okay. They're okay.
Okay.
And if there's anything that needs to come back, obviously, I think this is kind of the big lift, and...
Or record it.
And to expedite this, if you authorize us to move forward with a notice to proceed, and any budget changes that we would need.
I make a motion in that, that we would go ahead and allow them to proceed in any budget changes.
How about we just, is it all right if we include that with your existing motion?
Yes.
All right, we're good? Thank you. Okay, and then I'll maintain the second on that very, very happily. Anything further? No? All right, seeing no further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. I'm thrilled to see that. Thank you, guys, so much for coming out, who came to speak on this. Congratulations. What we'll do is, we're going to take, if it's all right with folks, a 10-minute recess. Is that okay with everyone? All right, we're going to take 10 minutes, and we'll reconvene right around 6:40, and then we'll get rolling with the remainder of the agenda. Thank you all.